Okay. Call the Wolfboro Select Board meeting to order on Wednesday, June 18th, 2025 at 6:30. Do we have any reason for non-public?
Mr. Chairman, we do not.
Thank you. First on the agenda is Libby Trustees' site visit. Anybody have any changes or additions? I entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve the May 20th, 2025 Libby Trustees' meeting's site visit as written.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
We have...
Dave, I abstain, and because I did during the meeting make a few statements, and they weren't recorded on the minutes, so, and I didn't have time to go through, watch the video, and find them.
Do you want to table them then, until you have a chance?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
I'm okay with the rest of them.
All right, next to the regular minutes of the Select Board meeting of June 4th. Linda?
Yeah, I have a change on page three. A, Wake Winnie, it's the first line at the end, "Wake" should be changed to "Winnie." It's Winnie Adventures. Page 10. It is from the bottom, the first time I'm speaking, and I'd like that paragraph to read, and the reasoning, I'm changing it because there was a response from Paul O'Brien, and I was explaining that, and it should say, "Mrs. Murray clarifies that 101,000 in revenue received by the town from Breeze Line franchise fees was paid to Community TV. The budget expense line for Community TV is 105,000 in 2025 default budget. Therefore, taxpayers are only covering 4,000." And that's all I have.
Okay, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I have one. Come up to the microphone here. Let me just drag this out. On page five, while we're talking about Wolfboro Community TV, three-quarters of the way down the page, I asked the question, "Will WCTV go dark this year?" There should be a question mark there. That's all.
Okay, the motion approved, amended?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next on our agenda is public input, limited to three minutes per resident, 20 minutes total. Anybody want to speak to us now? Suzanne?
Suzanne Ryan, resident. A couple of meetings passed. I asked about the pump station, the sewer pump station on Lerner Street. I asked if anyone had seen it, and was there any plans for vegetation or screening? And under your new rules, I guess you can't answer. I didn't get an answer, so I guess that's what's going on. However, I came by today, and to my chagrin, it's in, and it's a green monster, and my thoughts are that it didn't go through Planning Board's Site Plan Review that is voluntary upon the town. You didn't have to, but typically we do. I can't recall that it did, maybe it did. Had it, I assure the Planning Board would have brought up the issue of screening. Secondly, my guess, and it's a guess that we have, did not appropriate any money for vegetation and screening when we put in the warrant article for the pump station. So tonight, I give you a couple of pictures of what I saw, and I would hope that you find the money to screen it. And I could care less how you screen it, because that's up to you. But I will note that there is a cement pad to, as you face it, to the left side, that you won't be putting any screening in there, so one side is not going to have screening. And it's too bad.
Thank you. Do you want to speak?
My name is Beth Markku, and I'm a volunteer for Wolfboro Waters. I'm a volunteer for Wolfboro Waters and for the Assessment Subcommittee, and I'm just here to raise your awareness of the changes to the New Hampshire DES Cyanobacteria Reporting Protocol. So this year, instead of the red no swimming warnings signs that we see on beaches when cyanobacteria has been found, they are asking towns to put posters on all beaches and boating ramps. If you go to the beach or wherever, they ask you to take your phone and scan the QR code so that you can get the latest information about cyanobacteria. And that will pull up a map called the Healthy Swimming Mapper, and there you'll see a series of triangles. Black just means that cyanobacteria was seen by photograph. Orange means that there's cyanobacteria of cell count not enough to create a warning, but to give you a watch that it may continue, and if it does, it'll turn into a warning. And a red triangle means that there has been cyanobacteria present in the cell count of 70,000 cells or more. This year, they're not going to close beaches. They're going to have this healthy swimming map there for you to make your own decision. The focus is look before you leap. It puts the responsibility on the swimmer or the boater, and underscores the importance of real-time assessment at whatever location you're at. So it sends the message that cyanobacteria are a normal part of the ecosystem, but there are problems when they become overgrown. So they're putting the onus on the swimmer and the boater to be aware of it. We at the Wolfboro Waters have changed the town protocol to be consistent with New Hampshire DES.
Yeah, I think we do. Thank you. Anybody else want to talk to us right now?
I have a quick question on that. Are we still going to, oh, sorry, Bobby Budman, Wolfboro, are we still going to be posting the beaches, like having our recreation department make sure if we do have cyanobacteria? Because not everybody has a phone or is going to be QR coding this, or even understands how to use a QR code. And I think when we have cyanobacteria in the water, I mean, that just seems like something we should probably continue if we have an outbreak on one of our beaches to make sure we're posting the beach anyway.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
All right, next on our agenda is public hearings. We don't have any tonight. Bulk vote is next. This is our weekly manifest, property tax credit and exemptions, current use applications, updates on tax changes, property tax refund and abatements, yield tax levy, tent to cut, timber, raffle permit. Anybody want to make a motion to cover the bulk vote?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bulk vote A through G, and I want to point out that the two properties for the Wright Museum are included in this bulk vote.
Will you have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Board committee appointments. Thomas Bronson, you're up.
All right, my name is Thomas Bronson, and I would like to propose an Eagle project for, so, for the, so I'm a student over at Kingswood Regional High School, and part of the National Arts Society over there, and part of the Troop 165 that is here in Wolfboro. So as for the Boy Scouts, I've been a part of them for over six years now, and I've just about done with my Eagle Scout rank. But one of the last parts is Eagle Scout project, so that's why I would like to propose tonight. So for the project, what we want, I want to do is put a storage shed at the very top that will store any sort of sleds that are used to carry any sort of injured patients. It'll store bamboo that will be used to mark off any dangerous terrain, as well as any other supplies that the ski patrol would like to store in there. And that will be placed at the very top of the ski hill. There is already one at the bottom. The purpose of having one at the top is, there's stuff at the top, so if the patrol are at the top, there's already stuff at the top, they don't have to go down. They're not going to be hindered by carrying the stuff up the rope tow by the supplies, which will help with faster response times to any sort of calls that they might receive. So these are the photos of the storage shed that is currently at the bottom. As you can see, this one is also up on the concrete blocks. Those will have to have the one, if we were able to put one up at the top, we'd put those underneath that one as well, because it's going to be a few feet of snow. For the dimensions, I just have, these are the only dimensions I have right now, with 48 inches in height, 48 inches in width, and 96 inches of length. That is, those were measured from the exterior of the box, so I have not, I don't have the measurements for that roof right there, but the project is meant to basically copy that and put it at the top, so that way there'll be room for the sled, as well as all those other supplies. So for the locations, that is the Avonaki Ski Area, and if you can see at the bottom of that picture, there is a little white dot, I don't know if, but at the very top, that is the motor house. So behind that, in the woods, is where we would want to put this, so that way it is out of the way of any skiers. And obviously, there's going to be a few feet of snow there from making snow and all that, so, again, like I said, it's going to need to be raised off the ground a bit, so that way they can actually get stuff in and out of it. So the plan is to start construction this summer, and hopefully it'll be finished before the ski season starts. I would love to have it done by the end of the summer, but at the very latest, before the next ski season, for raising money, go to local businesses in town, organizations such as the Friends of Avonaki. Hancock Lumber also has donated supplies for projects like this to scouts in the past. So if this is approved, I will move on, I can move on to presenting it to the Boy Scouts, and after, and if it is approved, I can then begin construction. I've already met, and I've already met with Craig Garland for the Ski Patrol at Avonaki, and also the rec director. Both of them have thought it'd be a good project to have, so, any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Paul?
Mr. Bronson, thank you for this. Do you need electricity up there?
No, I will not need any electricity.
Thanks. Great job, nice presentation.
Awesome. John Thurston here. So what are your building materials? Are you going to use any plastic wood or anything like that that would make it last for a lifetime, or?
Yeah, probably some sort...
Compositional?
It was called like a compressed or treat-treated wood that would help it last much longer.
Okay. We want your project to last a long time.
Any other questions? Brian?
Mr. Bronson, I just finished a construction project myself. I have a whole bunch of materials at a camp out on Cow Island. If you would like to come and take whatever materials you want, they'll be donated at no charge.
Thank you very much.
Can't you deliver it?
Linda?
Yes, Jim, are you okay? Is there any issue that you have?
I think that what has to happen at this point, if you guys want to vote to approve him to move forward with the project, we would, upon completion, we'd have to have another meeting for you to accept the project.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion to that?
I'd make a motion to support Thomas Bronson in his Eagle Scout project to build a storage shed at the top behind the motor house at Avonaki Ski Hill.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, next on our agenda is Clearwater Lodges Commercial Vessel Landing Permit.
My name is Anne Beer, and I'm representing Clearwater Boat Charters, and I'm applying for a commercial docking permit.
Okay, any questions? Somebody like to make a motion?
So the, just a comment, so, Anne, I didn't read deeply, but you're not able to provide a schedule, is that right?
It is on demand, but roughly, our general hours are between eight and six that we are offering charters, but it is on demand, so there may be some outside of that time.
And given that we've approved others under this current ordinance that are on demand, I think it would be out of precedent to say, "You need a schedule, but the others don't." So, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian?
Quick question. Would you be able to, and I'm, I think we need to ask this of everybody involved, would you be able to update us maybe on a weekly basis? A short email that says, "This week, this is what we look like we have booked," knowing that it can change, rain, this and that, people call up and say, "Hey, we want Thursday afternoon, is it open?" But like a preliminary, something like that would be helpful.
Yes, and given that this is our first year operating at this capacity, that we're going to be tracking that pretty carefully anyway. But our primary port is out of Clearwater Lodges.
So if you can, it would be great.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so this is just a voluntary ask. It's not a requirement.
Correct.
We're not making this contingent on you giving us a weekly report.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to grant a commercial vehicle landing permit to Clearwater Lodges.
Second.
Brian?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
Opposed.
Okay. All right, next on our agenda is public input, downtown crosshawk parking changes. Anybody want to talk to us about that? I think you've all seen the striping that's there.
Hi, my name is Hunter Emery, Wolfboro, just wondering whether this was a state requirement, or whether this was a decision made in town?
This has been an ongoing, I don't want to call it a battle, but discussion with the state, and mostly it's a state requirement. We have elected in the past not to enforce it. People came to us two weeks ago, three weeks ago now, with some really good information on why we should do this, so we, as a board, made a motion and approved it. And then the town has striped it the way it should be, and the reason, if you go through town now, you can see right to the end of the crosswalks and the sidewalks, so, and that's what, the way it's supposed to be. Yes, we lost some spaces, we knew we would, but that's the way it's going to be right now.
Yeah, well, I was just wondering, as far as the state, so you've been able in the past to not have to.
Correct.
You just elected to do it because it was for safety.
Correct.
My only question in regards to that is, I understand safety, but you have spots marked off after the crosswalk. The vision would need to be for the oncoming traffic, not the after the crosswalk, and also whether any other options were ever considered, such as, let's say, a motorcycle parking spot that would maybe take up half the spot at least, and also then provide more visibility as a result of not having a higher vehicle there. And I did a quick Google search, and I understand the safety, but also the impact to local businesses. There are some studies that do suggest that a single parking spot in a resort town could generate as much as $20,000 in revenue for the local businesses, which, I mean, it's hard to quantify, obviously, but if our businesses can't have customers parking, they can't come and patronize us. And a quick drive through downtown on the way here, there were two available parking spots on Main Street through downtown up until the, you know, the town office here, which means that, you know, only two more cars would pull in, and if people can't find parking, they can't go out and eat, they can't purchase stuff. So that was my main concern. I do understand the safety issue, but I just would maybe like you guys to consider some other possibilities in simply taking away all the parking, and maybe only doing the ones in front of the park and on the oncoming traffic side, as well as possibly visiting, whether a motorcycle parking spot at least to put something there would be beneficial. Any questions?
Anybody? Brian?
So the individual, individuals who came three weeks ago, that was their original ask, was the spot only on the foreside, not the aft side of the parking on the travel lane. That's what they asked for. Why we aired giving them more, I'm not 100% certain. There was also a discussion, a quick, but a discussion about motorcycle parking in spots either before or aft of the crosswalk, so that the spots would at least be utilized, and that's something that I hope that we're going to address tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Linda?
Yeah, I have one question, or one concern, is that we, down by the post office, you come down, heading down, you're heading south and going to go up north, you have Glendon Street, you have full visibility of that parking space, and we took the parking space after it, so there, that, and Ed Bradley, there may be some of those when we really take a closer look. We didn't gain anything. And I would look at options for those places.
I mean, the last comment I have is if we're so worried about safety, too, there is absolutely no school zone at Carpenter, which I've always questioned why there is not.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
Separate question.
I didn't hear that.
I've wondered why there is no, if we're so concerned with safety to take away that many parking spots, why there is no school zone at Carpenter? It's sort of a separate question, but, but I have wondered that, so I figured, I'm standing here, I might as well at least bring that up.
Well, I think, if I could, Mr. Chairman, to answer that one, when we, when we started the conversation about where, you know, the meets and bounds, the limits of where we would take these actions, there was a, there was a brief conversation at this board that if we did it around the town, I think the parking lot number, the parking space number in question was 72, it was some, it was a big number. And I'll take this one, I said, "To me, the risk over there is this much bigger of somebody, you know, sticking their head out and getting potentially in trouble than other places around." So we took the decision to limit the conversation from right here down to a little pasture place, so we took that decision to do that. Having said that, you know, I think we missed an opportunity in front of the Avery Building. I think, I think one of my colleagues made a comment that you diagonally park there, and you come out of the town docks, I'm looking student body right, and when we, we may have missed an opportunity to, to deal with that particular crosswalk, which would need another parking space, I understand. So I think the, I think we let this marinate, and then we come back to it, and we, we deal with it as, after the season, would be kind of where I'm thinking about this, if we have to make adjustments, we do. But the guidelines to belabor the point here, when I was first on the member of the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, our prior town highway person, Dave Ford, reminded us that when these projects were going to take place downtown, we were going to have to step up and address what we do about parking spaces, and more specifically, something that the state of New Hampshire and most states don't like, mid-block crossings, you know, crossing in the middle of the block. And I do recall, and maybe other members here, too, that we explored at that time, should we get these little round bump outs, concrete things, and, no disrespect to us, we studied that and we didn't do anything. And then two weeks ago, someone came here with evidence that said, "This is dangerous." And it lit up, in my personal book, it lit up a bunch of people who have reminded me, "It's dangerous," and that's why, you know, I support a take of the action.
Brian?
John? So, so the question about the parking spots on both sides is, because that's what we were told is the requirement.
That's right.
And actually, if you go down through town, and you come through town, and you see both spots that are free on both sides of the crosswalk, and then you get two in front of the Moods Building and the Avery Building where they're not marked, but we did make the motion to mark those spots off. The other day, there was a lady who was, who was kind of veering out around the front of a vehicle that was pushing a stroller. So that lady, you couldn't see her stroller out in front of you, you were coming in the other direction. That's why it is important to have that other spot taken up, so when you're coming in the opposite direction, you actually can see them and allow them to come across the crosswalk.
I do understand that, but they also bear some responsibility to not run out all the way across the street before they make sure that the car stopped, even though it is obviously on the car, because they're in a crosswalk, they should stop.
I will concede also that in the same pass, there were two other sets of people who weren't even using the crosswalks, so that's a, that's a whole nother issue, but I'd like to ask Jim if he knows the reason why those other spots weren't marked off for us.
I believe it's forthcoming, if I understood, that's what Steve is saying, yes. They've run out of time.
Yeah, I also want to point out that I made a statement that if we take these parking spaces, we need to look for another parking lot. I added that to our CIP goals, because it, we have this issue, we can't keep on kicking it down the road, and we need to look at the long-term solution, and that is some kind of other parking. So I at least moved us in that direction.
I appreciate that.
And, and we also did focus on the condensed area in the town where the most traffic is and the most pedestrians are. We didn't go all the way up through here, we just tried to focus on those priority areas.
Dave? So I actually talked to DOT, I talked to Stan Tech, Jonathan Bork, who's done the work here, I talked to Safety Bureau for the state of New Hampshire, and I looked up all the RSAs. What they, what it comes down to, unless we do a full reconstruction of this roadway down here, we're not required by the state to follow any RSA regulations for crosswalks. That doesn't mean that we should... That doesn't mean that we shouldn't be safe. Mid-block crosswalks do not have a requirement for 20 feet on either side of them by state RSA at all. If you have a 20-foot opening after a crosswalk, so there's a side road, you don't need to take another spot on the, for, for parking beyond that, because you've already got your 20 feet for the roadway. So we didn't look at things, I don't think, very closely before we, we started doing this. I also think that we could use some of the spots, if we want to clear some of the four spots, the aft spots after a crosswalk, we could use them for motorcycle parking, or bike racks, or for other things. So I, I have a motion that I'm gonna bring forward to address some of this when we get to the point.
Yeah, thank you. I just definitely want to make sure people are thinking, and I'm sure that you are, about the impact to local businesses, because if somebody cannot park, they cannot come into our business. And like I said, it's not even the full busy time of the year, and there were two open parking spots, and we've already talked about taking away even more parking, because some of them haven't been marked yet, which means there would be zero. Any other questions?
Hi. Mary DeBries, Chamber of Commerce. And we, those people who came to the Chamber of Commerce on this subject, they did express their surprising concern about the loss of those 12 parking spaces, and they're asking how they will be replaced. And we so appreciate that it, this has been put into the CIP, but they want, there's an immediate need to replace those 12 parking spaces, and asking if you will look at that, what are the possibilities for something to be done sooner than later? There were some comments that we heard also that were already stated, so I won't go over those again. There was many comments about the expectation being that no matter what the ultimate decision is, that you will, the board will always consider how the, the impact of a vote on the collective community, which is our residents, visitors, and businesses. And they didn't see that happen with this vote. Just to, also, just on this subject, when our Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors was discussing what they were hearing, they ultimately looked at parking in general, including directional signage to parking, and we, I plan to put those thoughts together in writing and submit those to you. And that's what I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, for the newcomers in business downtown and a refresher, in 2009, this town voted $250,000 for the purpose of acquiring that parking lot that we're talking about. At that time, we had what was called the Taxpayers Association, that had a little influence in the community, and we were opposed to it. And the word got out, and Chip Maxfield from the Chamber came to visit us. And he presented the idea with optimism and hoped that we would support it. He assured us that he would do his ultimate best to make sure that the business owners downtown did not park out in front of their businesses, that they would use the new location. We took him at his word, and he did try, but it only lasted for a little while. Human nature being what it is, we're lazy, we don't want to walk. No one expected in the winter months people would have to walk, nor is it necessary, because there's plenty of parking downtown. So at any rate, that Warren Article did pass, and things moved along pretty well to buy the land. Then, in 2012, Warren Article 15 was to construct Glendon Street parking lot, and on the land acquired in 2009. And the cost of construction of that was $280,000 for 62 new spots. So the cost of the land, interest, and so forth totaled up to $680,000 at that time. I just would like to remind everyone that the taxpayers have been pro and supportive of helping the people downtown. And I'd also say that every time an owner takes a spot out front, they've made, they've made the possibility of a customer coming into their shop go away, because they say, if I can't park there, I'm not gonna bother to go in. So the idea of getting shop owners to park out on Glendon Street was a good one. I would hope that somehow that they are reminded in good weather to please do that, because a new parking lot is a long way off in the distance and probably a lot of money. So please start parking out on Glendon Street. And I support your idea of safety and giving up some parking places as a resident who uses downtown. Thank you.
Bobby Bevins, excuse me. I think Hunter has a really good point about the after parking spot. I know when we all go down, we have enough time when we're coming, you know, across the parking. I applaud you for taking that space in front of the crosswalks. There are just too many times, as citizens, that we almost hit someone in the crosswalk. I am going to ask the space before, if you consider utilizing that for motorcycles, I'm going to beg you not to. Have you seen the size of motorcycles now? They are the size of cars. It, it is not gonna give us the visibility. However, as we move forward with our master plan, and as we fix the downtown and we get a bike lane, we are really in need of more bike racks. We have one rack out by the train station that I know all of us who make sure we're not driving in in the summer, we can only put our bikes in one rack, and on a lot of days, that bike rack is already filled before we even ride into town. So it would be really great to be able to maybe utilize that space for actual bicycles. Thank, oh, one more thing. The Carpenter crosswalk, the way before the crosswalk, it comes on a diagonal, the way the lines are and stuff, it's really pretty. It's not blocked off in the way that we did it downtown aesthetically. Little more pleasing if you want to look at the Carpenter crosswalk that has kept our children safe all these years.
Linda?
Yeah, I just want to tell you, Bobby, I've been watching the bike rack that's down in Cape Park, and it is also full, and I've been thinking about where else. And for a while, I thought we had one by Smith River.
Don't we have one out here too? We used to have.
Yeah, that one she said, but there's one at Cape Park, and I thought there was also another one downtown, but I haven't been able to find it.
We used to hide one right here in the town parking lot, and that hasn't been there for quite a few years, so we haven't been able to park here. But if we can get more of our bike racks back up, if we know where they are, that would be great, but motorcycles are just too large now to, I mean, you just might as well park a car there. And having the safety for the drivers and the citizens, I think the space before, I agree with Hunter, the space after seems, I mean, we can park in that spot.
Brian?
Yeah, the, the reason the lines aren't angled at the no parking that we did now is because the lines for the parking spots were already there, and it was easier and more effective to just do it. Anytime down the road when we resurface or repaint again another time, those lines can be angled to do that way. I agree with you that when you look at it now, you don't want three motorcycles parked in a spot, but if you make it for a single motorcycle parking, I think there would be enough visual to still see past one motorcycle. Especially if you made it so that the motorcycle only took up half of the spot, and there was still an additional 10 feet of untouched spot. I agree with you also that we should use bicycle racks, but we have to be careful too, because a very long bicycle rack with eight bicycles on it would be just as visually impairing as, as two or three or four motorcycles. So we, we do have to use common sense when we do that. I've been suggesting a parking deck for the last four years, and I, I just knew that the, the money hasn't been there for it, we've had a million other things to do. And I wanted to let people know that when this happened and this vote went through, I voted yes to have the parking spots removed. And why I voted yes was because if I had voted no or abstained, I would have not been able to reconsider this question. So from now on going forward, if I vote yes for something, but I'm not 100% behind it, and I want to be able to reconsider it later, I'm gonna tell the public such.
Anybody else who wants to talk?
Hi, good evening, my name is Jordy Hutchinson. So just a couple of questions, I've already expressed my displeasure with how it was noticed, but I do understand it was a typo. But was there any statistics that were considered as far as like, have, did you have any statistics about how many accidents there've been at the crosswalks in Wolfboro? I know that we've all almost hit somebody, I know I've almost hit somebody, but did you consider any statistics?
I think the only thing we've kind of gathered information on, and that was from our Public Works Director, how many times our sign in the middle of the road gets hit?
Sure.
As people try to avoid somebody coming out?
Yeah.
And those up there get taken out all the time, so.
Sure.
And I think all of us walking out between two parked cars, as a child, I was taught you never did that.
Sure.
And to have two crosswalks come out between parked cars is dangerous, and I think if we looked, we could get statistics on that.
Sure, okay.
So Jordy?
Yes, sir.
The, the only statistic that we mentioned was the death of Coco Jutris.
Sure. Was that at a crosswalk?
That was on the crosswalk.
It was at a crosswalk.
From Colonial Arms Building.
That was Mill Street.
Yes.
And we didn't touch anything up.
Colonial Arms Building.
Wasn't it further up than that? I thought it was further up, but.
Mill Street, it was at that crosswalk.
It was at Mill Street, okay.
Yep.
So, so one death is probably enough.
Sure. I, I don't.
But that's a crosswalk that we haven't even addressed this time.
Correct.
No, but there's, there's, on the, on that crosswalk, there's a loading area that's hashed off, then there's Mill Street, which, like you said, doesn't need to be hashed off, because there's no parking spot. And on the other side, there's one parking spot on, on the low spot, low side.
So.
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. So you guys have said that the, that there's an RSA that dictates the crosswalks? Which RSA is that? You know, which RSA has the state cited when they've told you that we need to do that? I can only find 26569, which has to do with parking by crosswalks, but it doesn't, I believe that's for unmarked spots, it doesn't specifically say.
Oh, that, that's, that's a good point. Another state, part of the state RSA is that at every intersection, marked or unmarked, it is considered a crosswalk, and it's the same regulations, even if it's not striped.
Sure.
And also, the other thing is, part of this crossing ordinance is, it is, there is no jaywalking ordinance in, in the state of New Hampshire.
That was what I was gonna bring up next, is that, yeah, correct, and neither, there is there one in Wolfboro?
Yeah, but we don't, and we don't have one in, in Wolfboro, and at the last meeting I suggested that we create a jaywalking ordinance.
Sure.
The, what the state also says is that a person cannot just walk out into the street.
Correct.
If a car is eminently coming.
Correct.
They cannot cause a car to stop.
Correct.
They can make themselves positioned on the crosswalk, wait for cars to stop, and then they can proceed, and then once they're in the street, they have the right of way. But they only have the right of way on the lane that they're on. Till they get to the center line, the other line of traffic can still keep going, and once they cross the center line, the line of traffic can go where they just were. So it doesn't have to be a complete deadlock.
Sure.
It's what people do for safety, and that's a good thing.
Can anyone tell me which RSA this is?
I'm looking them up.
Jim, or anyone?
26569.
Okay, I've, I've looked at that, okay. All right, I guess that's my, that's the rest of my questions. I guess would, the last question would be, would the board consider having a public forum on this topic? You know, I think that some of the markings are appropriate, some are probably not. I know that you've talked about maybe removing some, and given that that's the case, wouldn't it make sense to include the public in that discussion? So I would just ask the board to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. It's actually 26469, number two. Linda?
No, there's more than that. Section 4111.
Yeah, at the June 12th meeting, I made a motion that this meeting, we would talk about it, and that we'd get public input, and that's what we're trying to get tonight.
Yeah, we are not gonna make a decision tonight. This is just fair input.
So the ones that I found were 265, Roman numeral 1, 2, 3, 4, all address crosswalks, and 265:36 also. So there's several of them. Oh, section 265:35 also has to do with crosswalks. So there's, there's a lot of RSAs that need to be read, and there's lots of regulations.
Mr. Chairman?
Paul?
So Brian has capably provided us with all those numbers, and what Jim, with the advice of counsel, provided us was, in addition to the numbers referenced, section 4111, regulation of use of highways, et cetera. The selectmen may regulate the use of all public highway sidewalks and commons in their respective towns for the purposes that may exercise all the powers conferred on city councils by RSA 4717 and others cited. I went and I looked those up. The first thing we are empowered to do, and has been empowered to do since the beginning of the selectman concept, is to lay out roads. It's the first thing we're supposed to do. And we did it. And we, if we got it wrong, if we didn't, we, we did it. And, and I, I'm, I'm just gonna, I participated in almost getting hit. Jordy, you're right, I never did a traffic study as to how many times I stuck my head out there and had somebody do the gratuitous, I'm so sorry, I almost, I almost whacked you. When someone comes to the microphone and said, we have a concern, they showed us photographs, since that time I've received more photographs, I took the decision and supported the motion, not so that I could do a reconsideration. I took the decision to support the motion and said, I think this is a safety issue, I think this is within my remit, I think that I have the ability to do it, and, and if it disappoints people, I apologize for disappointing you, but I took that decision. And that's where I'm at.
Dammie?
Good evening.
Whoops.
Good evening. Deb Skelly, business owner downtown, and yes, I am very, very, very concerned about parking as a business owner in Wolfboro, but I am even more concerned about safety, and I appreciate the fact that you all are concerned. I will never forget the day that Coco Jutris passed away from being hit on her way home from Carpenter School. And she was doing what she was supposed to be doing. She got off her bike to cross the street, and she was hit. So I, to me, it's not even a discussion. I will also go on to say that I agree with this lady, that if business owners did not park their cars anywhere in front of their business, or in front of any, everybody else's business, and their employees, our parking problem would be so much less. I, I, that's one thing I just can't understand. So I think that's very important. And the other piece that I wanted to mention, I'm confused also about. And the other piece that I wanted to mention, I'm confused also about the place, the parking spot that was in, is in front of Avery's. I was concerned about that, because that's where I have almost hit somebody, I have almost been hit, and I have seen others. I've seen people jump back off the street from that space, so I was concerned about that one as well. But thank you for keeping safety of all of our people and especially our children.
Hey, do we have any other public input for us to deal with? Okay, going on to our next agenda item?
Dave, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to remove the seven no parking areas, one in front of Back Bay Clothing, one in front of T-Tops, one in front of North Main Cafe, one in front of Yankee Pedlar, one in front of Melanson's Real Estate, one in front of Lydia's, and one in front of the post office. I would like to add to no parking zones, one at the corner of the Avery Building and one at the corner of the Maxfield Building, as Linda mentioned with that one. And I would like the Select Board to designate two of the remaining new non-parking areas, one for a single motorcycle parking and one for a bicycle rack parking.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It did not pass. And this, to me, tonight was for discussion only. I didn't expect to have a motion, so I think that was not the right thing to do, Brian. We even had a chance to look at it. There's no, there's no diagram of it. I can't remember all those spaces. So, anyway, moving along, our budget for May 2025. Sam?
I'm Sam Kelly, Finance Director. I'm here to review the actual versus budget report for May 2025.
Sam?
Louder, I'm sorry. I have an ear infection, so I can't hear. I feel like I'm yelling, but. The report represents five months or 42% of the budget year. These numbers also reflect the first half tax warrant, which was booked in May. General fund for expenses, through May, we're at 44%. Water fund, 46%. Municipal electric fund, 48%. Sewer fund, 80%. And Pop Whalen Fund, 57%. On the revenue side of things, general fund has received 45% of their expected revenue. Water fund is at 68%. Electric fund, 48%. Sewer at 33% and Pop Whalen at 47%. Also included in your packet are the donation reconciliation, the capital reserve fund planning document, as well as the gas and diesel allocation costs. And the finance department, as of late, has been starting to work on the 2026 budget prep. So we're already up and running. And that's all I really have for you tonight, unless you have any questions.
Linda?
Yeah, I have looked at it and I've talked to Sam. I am concerned with the allocations of salaries in the Public Works Department, and she ensures me that we'll get that straightened out. I also am concerned about our use of legal, and I think that's up high. Those are two areas I think, as a board, we should keep an eye on.
Just if I.
Paul?
What, specifically on the allocations, Linda? If I could ask?
Well, they're right in there. You can see them.
You're, you think they're under-allocated towards water, over-allocated toward sewer?
No, no. The Public Works Department, the Public Works Director's salary is not allocated out to the supervisory line where it should be, and it's all part of the transition from the default budget.
Yep.
And so I've been watching it. We haven't gotten that done yet. And I just wanted the areas that, we've had two great conversations about it, but I just want to point it out, I'm still keeping an eye on that last piece.
Yeah.
And thank you for doing that. I just wanted to understand, because they're awfully big departments, so it's the allocation of, at a minimum, the Director of Public Works's salary across the enterprise?
Against, across Public Works, I believe in the enterprise funds, it's okay.
Correct.
I misspoke. I didn't mean enterprise, but across Public Works.
Correct.
I got it. Okay, thank you. I have two questions. May I?
Go ahead.
So thank you for this. And again, it's a lot to try to dive into, and you see the day-to-day stuff. Question on, update on, how are we doing with the audit? Last time you said they were on track.
Um, no new news. They've been looking at it between other onsite visits of theirs. We've received a few questions via email for more information, which we've given to them.
Just episodic things, no big deal?
Yeah, we're still, as far as I know, on track for that final report in August.
And setting aside my colleague's question about the allocation of an individual's salary across the Public Works Department, is there anything that is jumping off the page in any place in this town that concerns you about overspend, under, we'll hear from our good friend at Pop Whalen, but overspend, under-revenue? Is there anything that you're seeing that's bugging you?
Um, the only thing I'm just monitoring is our IT budget.
The IT budget?
Yeah, the default, it took quite a bit of a hit. And due to, there's like a Microsoft date in October where Microsoft 10 will no longer be supported. So we've just started kind of analyzing where we're at with that. We had a good meeting today to try to see how to move forward.
So not to ask, not to get the answer to the question tonight, are we talking on an order of magnitude, 10,000, 100,000, 1 million?
Definitely not a million.
Okay.
Um, I don't have a.
No, I said not to get into it today, but is there an order of magnitude? If that's something that you say, this just can bother me a little bit, but if it has an effect on the way in town operations?
No, no.
Got it. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thanks, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay, next on our agenda is Pop Whalen Operations Report for May of 2025.
Are we getting a new chiller? We're just fixing the motor, right?
Brian Paul, Operations Director of Pop Whalen Arena.
There he is.
Basically, the only thing that's really changed since the last time I was here with you guys is we've started work on the 12-cylinder compressor. We had American Refrigeration come out. They did a full overhaul of it, looking at it, found that some of the stuff that was recommended by the other company was not needed, in their opinion. And they also feel that they put in their proposal to also overhaul the eight-cylinder, which was having issues at the end of the last year. The total for, excuse me, everything, including them coming out to pull it apart, to look at everything, will be just under $60,000. With the other company, with everything that they proposed, we were looking at it close to $85,000. So it was a savings as of right now. They came out one day and took care of some free-on issues, and are planning on being here starting Monday to get everything up and running by the end of next week. We're still working on, myself, Jim, Jim Opponis, and Christine Collins. I've met with the other company about the maintenance contract, and we're still working out details on that. Coming up, some things that are coming up at Pop Whalen. We have, on July 19th, we have a flea market. I encourage everybody to come out for that. And then we're getting ready for ICEN in August 11th.
Any questions for Brian? Thank you.
Muted.
What was that shot? You okay?
Okay, next on the agenda is food trucks, alcohol usage.
So what I'm coming here for you, to you here today for is to try to streamline some of the things that happen at Pop Whalen. For me to go out and get new business, to bring in different events.
I'm muted. Muted.
You need what?
We're having sound problems.
Unmuted.
Go ahead, Brian.
Technical difficulty.
So what I'm trying to do is streamline the process. If someone comes to me and says they want to run an event, or a show, or something at the pop, that we can, basically, instead of having them have to then come back here, get a temporary permit, and go back and forth, we can make all this in one, in one shot. What I've given to you folks is a map showing where we would propose that all food trucks or any outside activity at the pop would go during any event. We understand that all food trucks do need to still be certified by the fire department here in Wolfboro, so that would be still part of their process. On the alcohol side of it, they would have to have, there'd be two different scenarios. One is if they're selling it, and one is if they're sampling it. For instance, the wedding expo is coming up. They give one thing of champagne to the bride and the bride-to-be and the mother of the bride-to-be. They have a state-licensed person who hands out one glass of champagne. And so instead of them coming here and trying to get an alcohol permit, we would basically say, "You need to give to us your certificate from the state showing that you can pour and serve, and a certificate of insurance if it's selling." They would have to give us that, plus show us where a nonprofit is being, getting proceeds from it. With the alcohol portion of it, I would also send out a message to you folks saying, "This is happening," so you're not blindsided that it's happening at the pop.
Any questions? My question might be for Jim, as far as checking with our town attorney, whether, number one, we can do that. And usually, what we try to do is with these different events, is to let the public know that they're happening, so that they know that it's happening. And we usually tape those individually. We always have, so I don't think it's, I don't think it's been an issue. Linda?
Yeah, we have a problem because our Chapter 5 of our ordinance, alcoholic beverage, requires us to hold a public hearing. So we have an ordinance, and we would not be following our ordinance. So I have an issue with not following the ordinance if we, so I don't know how we get around that. It's giving all the authority to an individual, and I think we took a long time as a town to be comfortable allowing alcohol at events. And so I question whether we could even do this.
And at Abernathy, at the lodge, we've only allowed BYOBs, correct?
Yeah.
Right? Right? We've only allowed BYOBs at Abernathy with a permit. So this wouldn't be a BYOB. It's, we've allowed people to bring in and have alcohol, and this would be another company serving alcohol.
Under our ordinance, it is to serve or offer sale beer and wine for consumptions following, and then we go right through all the regulations in our ordinance.
So the one thing, the one thing that I would add is, from a state regulatory standpoint, what happens is, the town receives a letter from the Liquor Commission. The Liquor Commission wants to ensure that this falls within zoning of the district to be able to issue the temporary permit to the vendor who has the liquor license. So there is state processes as well that's in place. I fully understand the ramifications with the town ordinance, and I think this is why Brian is bringing it to our attention, is because is there a way going forward to be able to streamline this in amending the ordinance? Or do you want to stick with the ordinance going forward?
Does this type of situation, is it covered underneath our current insurance?
So I think we are covered under our insurance, but they also have to provide us a copy of their insurance as well.
Right. So Linda?
Yeah, the other.
Paul?
Whoops, you want to go?
You want to go?
No, you can go. I'll not go.
So you just saw, you heard, and I think thoughtfully, all the reasons that, you know, we got a little agita about what you were thinking about. We got an ordinance we have to deal with, we have an insurance issue we got to deal with, we have permissions, we have public input, we have a whole bunch of things we got to deal with. So I look at this as two opportunities here. We can either say, "Too hard, can't do, bye," or come back with a little more staff work, not to try to circumvent. We can't circumvent the fact that we have a responsibility to be responsible about who gets to serve alcohol. We have a responsibility to keep the public apprised. We have a whole bunch of responsibilities. So with those as not negotiables, can you come back with something that might be a little, you know, easier for us to understand and work on?
On the alcohol side, yes.
On everything.
What about the food truck?
Parking, all that.
Should we separate out the food truck from the alcohol?
I can do that.
Do that.
I can do that easily.
Yeah, that could be a layup, right? We just decide that you get to decide.
Yeah.
I'm making it up. You get to decide on your own.
I mean, and I think that's what we, I guess, I guess that was more the, the opportunity that I was kind of going with is, one, get approval for the food trucks.
No problem.
And stuff like that.
No problem.
And then, secondly, the alcohol side of it, let's put it this way, as of right now, except for the wedding expo that's giving out one glass of champagne to everybody, I don't have anybody, I don't have anyone coming to me saying, "We want to do something with alcohol."
But Brian, I think, I think the, you know, we were, we don't want to be accused of being too quick to make decisions here. So, so you said, you know, hey, do I get a good-to-go on the food truck thing? Someday, someone with a food truck's going to want to serve, you know, a taco and a beer, all right? And so I would ask you to think about, I'm not trying to drive you into more staff work.
No.
It's a bad model.
No, but what I'm saying.
Think about what could happen, and then come back to us and say, "I got it. You got ordinances, you got insurance, you got all the things that you guys, general term, you folks are all getting all nervous about. Here's a proposal." So I would say this is a good first step.
No, I see where you're coming from 100%. And I think what I would like to propose for today is we keep the alcohol as-is with the town, going, coming here and getting special permits. The food trucks seem to be the popular item on most of our events, or even some sort of outside the building, you know, if we have to have a tent or something like that, and going, going forward with that. With no alcohol at this point in time until we come up with a better game plan over the, over the next few months.
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to point out in the requirements is that we get feedback from the Police Department of Public Works, and there have been events that the police will say, "I would like two officers there," so all that information. There's a lot more that goes into the alcohol than the food truck. So that's my reason why I think we, I think your suggestion is to put the alcohol aside and deal with the food trucks, just for me.
Set that aside, the food truck thing, I personally am not hearing a concern here that I would have, although some may have a concern about parking, but they may, I don't have a concern about that. Just no alcohol unless we go through the cranking of this. Because we have to do.
John?
I agree.
So Paul, thanks for coming here tonight and telling us about this stuff. So Beau came to us and offered a, an approval for a food truck Fridays. So Bo came to us and offered a, an approval for a Food Truck Fridays, or is that correct?
Yep.
So did he give us the blueprint to where the food trucks will be located and so forth, and?
They did, when they came to you folks with the Food Truck Fridays, it was prior to, we're getting more and more requests to do events at Pop Whalen, including the flea market that's coming up in July with food trucks. So the idea is to try to streamline the food truck process of trying to get people into Pop Whalen for events like a flea market, like a home show, like any of those type of events at the place, without having to tell the person who's renting the facility, "Okay, now you got to go fill out a temporary permit, then you got to go to the board of, you got to go to the select board." We're just trying to streamline that with showing, "Okay, these are the places that have been approved by the select board and the town that you, we can park this stuff." We do know that the, the fire department does have to approve all food trucks. I did talk to Chief Zadi about it, and there is no statewide, so they have to talk to the town for every food truck that comes in, and get a letter from them saying that they're approved. We understand where, I actually put these, do match the fire code of 15 feet away from the building, and 10 feet from any vehicles. So that's where the food truck part comes in, is to just try to streamline it so we don't have to constantly keep coming back for special permits.
So a question for Jim. Do we have a, do we have a process in place so that we could just give Paul the go-ahead to allow him to stage these events?
Yeah, I think you do. So the Food Truck Fridays, the location for the food trucks for those events is different. If you see on the map that Brian provided, he's closer to the building, which makes sense for those events at Pop Whalen. I think the state licensing, which is in place regulating food trucks, and I think Brian has identified just two spots, is that correct, Brian?
Two spots in front of the building, and then some spots on the side where the dirt lot is.
So I feel comfortable that this is something that we can capture within some documentation that we're going to have to do as staff to ensure that they meet all the thresholds.
Okay. Dave, so, and I'm, and I'm okay with food trucks being there. Do we need to have a number? What if an event was 15 food trucks? So are we going to have a, something that we understand? And my other question is, when they did the sock hop, not this year, but the year before, and jog my memory, was there beer and wine sold there?
I wasn't here.
They came and got a permit, and they had-
And that was easy. It was fairly easy for them to come and get that permit.
They just have to work ahead of time.
Well, they had to get the licenses and do all the other stuff, so it is a process.
Yeah, it is a process. It did work. I agree that we should separate the beer and wine for now, and the, and the food trucks. My just, my concern is, what if we, somebody started having 20 food truck festivals there three nights a week? Is it going to hurt the businesses in downtown?
I think you make a valid point, and I think you should cap the number.
And I would agree with you that at some, at a point, and I've actually counted it out here myself, that we could fit up to six, and that would be the maximum that, anything above that, one, takes too many parking spots up, and you wouldn't even have parking for people to come to the, to the event. Especially in the summertime, it's not like we can go easily park at other locations around town and bus them in or anything like that, because there's just no parking, as was already discussed many times over tonight. You know, I think it's more for the one or two offs at these events.
Correct.
And, you know, if we get to something where it's a food truck festival, let's say, then yes, I think, then I would need to come back here and say, "Hey, we need to come up with a plan as a community on how this is going to work."
Chairman?
Right.
Yes.
I heard two questions by my colleague, and if I'm, if I'm wrong, please correct me. Question number one is, how many food trucks is too much? And I think, you know, your answer is six.
Six is the maximum that I've, I've laid out.
And the town manager and you folks can, so I'm going to let, personally, I would let you figure that one out. But I heard question number two, and it was kind of an implied question. At what point does somebody downtown say, "You're stealing business?" And I don't think we're in a, we're in a position to answer that, and I don't think we want to be in a position to answer that. That's just a personal opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
John? So my question to the amount of food trucks is, are we picking winners and losers again? Are we putting all the names in a hat? Because basically, if-
Well, the food trucks have to, the food trucks have to be part of an event that is been either paid for by an outside group that's bringing, that's coming in, that's paying for the use of the Pop Whalen arena, or something that we're running as the town and inviting people in. It's not just, we're going to just park food trucks there just because they want to have a place to park a food truck.
No, but say somebody wants to say, you know, "I'm a, I'm a fresh startup, and won't you give me a chance to get my product there?" And how would you, no?
The answer is no, unless it's part of a specific event that's there that we've either invited, or someone who is renting the facility, because they have to rent the inside of the facility to be able to bring stuff in to the outside of the facility.
Just wanted to get that out there.
Yeah.
So, so you would write a food truck policy for Abernathy that would state, "We will, we will allow up to six food trucks." Food trucks have to be part of an event unless approved by the, the select board, and other things. They have to be state-licensed, they have to be inspected, so on and so on. You could do something like that for us.
Yeah, I mean, I could do it for pop, I mean, and I'll get Bo to help out with the Abernathy side of it.
Oh, he's trying to get into the Abernathy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Christine Collins. I think the reason why we brought this to your attention is, we're trying to rent the facility, right? So someone has come to us, they're like, "We want to have an event, we want to rent the facility." We don't have to come to you for that, because they're renting the facility. Well, now we want to put a food truck outside, and it's a Thursday, you just had your meeting, and now we have to wait two weeks, and their event is prior to that, or we want to advertise. So I think we're not trying to circumvent anything. What we want is just, we're identifying that if there was an event and they wanted to have a food truck without alcohol, then this would be the location, and it would be part of their rental process. That's part of their event, but it's outside. That's all we're asking. I think we did bring up the alcohol because we have, for instance, the wedding venue, and we reached out to, I think it was Concord, Concord, and we asked what they do, and they don't have any, like, town ordinance that they do something. It's just part of the event, they have state approval, so that's why we were looking at that. We're not trying to get around things, we're trying to make it easier to rent for people because to wait for that two weeks and then come for a meeting if they're out of town and they're trying to start advertising, that's all we were looking at.
So I'd be comfortable as long as I see a policy with parameters.
Yeah, that's where I was coming back to. A written policy that we get, then it's all clear, and we don't have any misunderstandings.
So do you have anything coming up that you need us to add quickly?
So there is the flea market on February, on July 19th. They do have one, one food truck? One food truck at, for that event, and actually, that food truck also needs electricity. That's why one of the spots in the front that has, there's power there from the building would need to be used. So that's the only one that's right now pending. That's coming up in the next three weeks.
Okay. Any other questions for Brian?
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Don't you want a motion?
Thank you.
I thought you must. I was trying to put together, I move that we grant permission, and I'm going to say the Park and Rec Department, because that gives a wider berth, to have food trucks at events that are renting our facility, and the maximum number of food trucks is six.
Second. Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to add to that, if possible, that they have a policy, a written policy in place, that, so that we understand that there's going to be a written policy. And do you need to define which locations, or just any location? Because your motion just is kind of blanketed for any location.
I, I think I'm putting it to them. They are out there. They may put them here for this event, they may put them there for another event, not six. I will add, and subject, a food truck policy, absolutely.
I agree. Yep. You okay with that?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again.
Thanks, Brian.
Next on our agenda is Kirk Titus Memorial. So I'll be recusing myself for this one, please.
Christine Collins, Parks and Recreation Director. So I put a proposal together. Kirk Titus was our tree warden for a number of years, 16, to be precise. He passed away on May 13. Unfortunately, he knew he was in the process, so his last big project was the Wolfboro Arbor Day of Service. So every year, we celebrate Arbor Day, which we have done for numerous years. This year, unfortunately, it landed on April vacation. So the kids weren't part of it, unfortunately. But we did start the Wolfboro Arbor Day of Service, which is, we reached out to local landscapers, and they worked with our Parks and Rec Department to come together so we could plant part of those 21 trees. They helped us get those in the ground this year. Kirk was a big part of that, gave us the names and stuff, and then we had a little, we got them shirts, and then we had a little cookout after. And we think this is going to be something that we do in the future, so we're really excited about it. It was a good, feel-good moment. We did miss the children, we'll continue that Arbor Day, but this will be in conjunction with that. Because Kirk had gave so much to our town, I don't know if anybody has been down at Foss Field lately where we planted the row of trees, it looks gorgeous. By the way, our, kudos to the Parks and Rec Maintenance Department, they are really killing it out there. So we identified, I was down there, and I thought it was just a beautiful spot where we just planted all those trees. And on the other side, we have those stones. So what I was thinking, instead of moving one of the stones, it's actually the perfect stone in your picture, it's flat, and I did talk to John Thurston, because he works with stones. So I have in there a plaque that we want to dedicate to Kirk Titus in memorizing him, and put it on that stone, which is right across from that last row of trees that we just planted. I did reach out to his wife before I came here, just to get her permission. She liked the wording of it, she thought it was a great idea, she's very appreciative of it. But the next step I told her was to come to you to make sure it was okay.
Any questions for Christine? We need a motion, yes.
No, you do.
No, I'm going to have you, but I want to, no, I want to just make a statement before you do it. I think the board should take the money, which is $1,208.48, out of the Board of Selectmen's miscellaneous, miscellaneous line.
I'd like to make a motion that we, oh, you want a question?
Make that part of the motion.
Okay. Sorry, there was a new paper, I don't know if it got submitted, it was a little bit more.
So maybe I missed something.
Whatever the amount is, out of that line, because I think we had $5,000 in it.
So just, maybe I missed something, but I was just wondering, where in the budget were getting this money from? Is it in your Parks and Rec budget, or?
I just, I just talked about it.
You said $208.
No, I said out of our miscellaneous line. We have a miscellaneous line in this budget, and I think it's $5,000.
Yeah, I believe it's $5,500.
Okay, $5,500. I heard, I don't know why I heard hundreds of dollars.
So the new total is $1,141.60.
So it's not $1,208?
We got $1,208.
It went up a little bit, because when I gave the proof, they gave me approval, and then they said, "Well, because you have the wording and it's, it's a bronze, the way they lay it," it ended up being a little bit more. Oh, no.
A little bit less.
A little bit less.
No, it's 14,6606.
Oh, okay. All right.
Samantha, would you help us here? We need, we got, we got scientific notation going on. I'm going to make a motion that we, we allocate $1,475 out of the select board miscellaneous budget for the construction and the installation of a bronze plaque on stone in memory, in loving memory of Kirk Titus, our tree warden from 2009 through 2025.
Just a second.
Second. Second.
Okay. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Christine.
That was a hard one. Thank you, Christine.
Okay, next on our agenda is application for adequate fire and emergency response grant.
Hi, Tom Zadi, Fire Chief. As you know, as the ambulance project was developed, both the MRI report and the ADHOT Committee report, strongly recommended seeking out any grant money that's available to help offset the cost of the project. Obviously, the proposal in year one was approved by the voters, and recently, the federal SAFER grant, application period opened. SAFER stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. This is a federal grant through FEMA. I did put a summary forwarded to you in your packet, but for the sake of the audience, it's a grant program that helps offset the cost of base pay and benefits for newly hired firefighters for a period of three years. It offsets 75% of the cost in year one, 75% in year two, and 35% in year three, at which time they would be entirely the responsibility of the community. In the midst of preparing the grant application, in speaking with peers around the state who have done this, and frankly, common sense, they all indicated that it would be very helpful to include in the application the support of the, the governing body of the community, which is primarily the reason we're here today. I'd like to be able to include something from the board indicating they accept, would accept the grant if it should be awarded, and understand the terms and so forth. What I have done, and I would caution you that I've, I've developed some numbers, I am still in the, so we say, request for information phase, because they do make reference to year one, year two, and year three, and I'm getting clarity on, is year one from the date of hire to 12 months later, or is it our fiscal year, or is it the federal fiscal year? We're working through that. So my point being, I am happy to share some numbers, but the actual numbers may change somewhat, depending on how that fiscal year issue shakes out. What this, the way this lays out, in covering 75% of the cost in year one, would be approximately In year two, would be $428,481. In year three, when the, the grant drops to 35%, it would be $210,703, for a three-year total of $922,839. Again, still working through some of the particulars in terms of fiscal years versus calendar years and that sort of thing, but I've been assured that if awarded, the, the grant folks at FEMA would work with us to make it work on our calendar and with our required town meeting approvals and those sort of things. So essentially, that's where we are. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. The timeframe would be, this is due on the 3rd of July. I have every intention of getting it in on time, because they really don't let you not do that. Over the course of the summer, they would begin to review the applications, and the awards would be announced through the fall, well, early fall, I believe, no later than the 30th of September would be the final announcement. So we would know prior to the budget process for next year where we stand with all this. I think our goal would be to be able to present year two of the ambulance project next March to the voters, and be able to say that we've been able to offset this much of the cost of this with receipt of a federal grant. So that's, that's essentially the purpose why we're here today.
Any questions for Tom? I think what he's basically saying is- I think what he's basically saying is that he's moving ahead with this.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're moving forward. Like I said, it would be, I'm told it would be very helpful that if the board would lend its support to the application.
I'm personally, I'm in favor of any money we can get in return. Linda?
Yeah, I have no problem with it, except the wording on the motion at the bottom of the page. I can support application four, but I question whether we could say we would accept the federal funds because we're required to hold a public hearing.
So the way that I would envision this happening is it would be tied in with the warrant article. When that warrant article is crafted, it'll say to accept grants, donations, blah, 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 what we normally do. If voted in, that would constitute the first public hearing. And then the second public hearing would be after the town meeting vote.
Right, but the motion he wants tonight is, would support the application for and would accept, and that's what I'm questioning. Can we vote to say tonight we'll accept when we have the other requirements? The first line out of his motion that's here, and that's what I'm questioning.
We should vote to support it.
Yeah, I have no qualms with you with the application. Obviously, the acceptance probably should be removed because it does, is contingent on.
So the way I was looking at it was, if you want me to try, I can try a motion if you want me to.
I just, just need to.
Correct.
Get that one thing out.
And I agree with you.
Before you do it. So, so we're going to know, that was going to be my question for Tom, and I think you've answered it. Thanks for this, by the way. So we're going to know inside of the budget season whether we're in, out, up, or down on these monies.
Correct.
And, and you said in the fall. They don't, they don't, they're not clear as to when they're going to announce it.
The, the document I sent to you was the summary of the grant program. The actual notice of funding opportunity goes into the hundreds of pages. But it is very clear in there that they will announce the awards no later than September thirtieth.
Phone book, I got that part. But you think we'd get it in the fall, October, November? I'm just trying to figure out for Sam and for the town manager, how we get this thing into the budget and then get it out of the budget if in fact the money's heading in our direction.
Well, it's gross budgeting anyways, so we would, we have to appropriate that gross amount.
You'd have to appropriate it when you got the money.
But we would show on the revenue side of the House that we're receiving this grant offset acts. I do think that if you remove just the words and would accept the.
Correct.
If you remove those words, I think that that meets the intent of what the chief's looking for and what you're looking for.
That's correct.
And if I may, because I drafted this in May when this first came out and we didn't make the agenda for the first June meeting, the language here says offset the cost of three proposed firefighters. In conversations in-house and with Jim, we can either delete the number, or I would ask you to consider adding four instead of three because we would be able to capture that fourth, that third firefighter from the last couple of years who we lost in the two default budgets as part of this funding package.
What's the risk of doing that?
I think it actually paints a better picture.
Yeah.
For adequate staffing.
Because we'd be able to say that with the, with the hiring of those individuals would bring us up to a certain staffing level, which coincidentally is what we project for the ambulance project. And be able to cover with a certain minimum number of staff and so forth, which is what the intent of the grant program is to increase the number of firefighters on duty.
So the answer going from three to four is no risk and it actually paints a better picture?
In my opinion, it paints a better picture.
If that's the right word, gives you a better optic that we are actually trying to move towards full staff.
It actually addresses that position that we've lost in the last few years.
And we don't want to say up to four. We want to just say four.
Either say four, or I suppose you can just not address the number and just say the proposed firefighters. Again, I think what they're looking for at this stage is just a concept of approval by the board.
Okay.
You know, my opinion on that is if, if the number is not introducing risk, but the number tells us that, tells somebody that we're moving towards full staff, I'd put the number in. That would be, you know, me. Okay, thanks.
So, so I can make the motion if you're ready, and it would be, the motion would be to ask the Wolfboro Select Board to support the application for the federal staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant if awarded to offset the cost of four proposed career firefighters. The Select Board understands and agrees to the terms and conditions of the SAFER Grant, including in the requirement to hire and retain the firefighters for the duration of the grant period, the prohibition of layoffs during the grant period, the requirement to match the federal funding portion of the grant, and the requirement to use the grant funds for the specific purposes outlined in the grant agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, old business. We need to schedule a follow-up meeting for docs and morphs.
Yes, if we could do that, that would be wonderful. You have not had an opportunity to sit down and talk about this since the last rendition.
Anybody have any date?
Well, we could keep to Wednesdays.
Wednesdays.
Like the twenty-fifth.
Yep.
That would get us.
A week from tonight?
A week from tonight. I'd prefer that than to start in July.
I, I like that.
Fine. Hang on.
What time? Six-thirty, regular time?
I would.
Are we going to do the Wednesday, Wednesday?
Six-thirty.
Okay, so next Wednesday at six-thirty?
Can I just launch my calendar here? Thanks.
We'll get it scheduled.
Hang on. Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. And can we, can we get a, maybe, as we've been at this for a lot of hours, can we get maybe a, let's, let's nail down the following three things, you know, try to nail down some items on an agenda so we, we stay tight, don't wander? Things that give you the most amount of heartburn.
Okay, so we'll schedule next Wednesday at six-thirty. Hey, any other business?
I have some, Mr. Chairman.
I do too.
I have three.
And Brian has three. I'll defer.
Okay.
The reason I am bringing up a text message I received from John in public is that the reason for a non-public session under ninety-one dash A colon three two C, it states matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of a public body itself. Therefore, having the Select Board discuss John's text request to eliminate me from the Community Center Committee is not an option, but forces me into public. John texts requested that I allow Dave and him to work on the Community Center project together. John would really like to go through the process with John, I mean with Dave. He was meeting with Dave on Tuesday. I did not respond because it seemed to me the two members of the Select Board had had a conversation and my response would circumvent RSA ninety-one A because three members, a majority of the board, would be communicating outside a Select Board meeting. I reviewed the April sixteen Select Board video on my appointment to the Community Center Committee. John requested the re-establishment of the Community Center Committee. I said I would work with John. He said okay. Then Dave said he would like to work on the committee. I turned to Dave and offered Dave the position on the Community Center Committee. Dave responded, no, and said the three of us can be on the committee. Jim said he would just notice the meeting. I still would like to be on the Community Center Committee, even though John did not invite me to join Dave and him on a site visit to the Community Center in the electric building yesterday, nor was I included in a committee meeting yesterday afternoon. I want a public explanation why John is requesting that I be eliminated from the Community Center Committee when in public it was agreed that I would be on the committee and the three of us would work together. If I am to be removed, I would like a vote by the Board of Selectmen to remove me from the Community Center Committee. I have had many feelings after being excluded. I first was angry, but a very long swim took care of that. I felt sad that a member of the Select Board would force another member off of committee. It makes me feel as if some members of the Select Board I cannot trust, and it seems to me if the Select Board, that a Select Board member is trying to control the membership on the Community Center Committee. So if I am to be removed, I'd like a vote of this board.
Any other discussion?
I have some.
Is it relevant, is it relevant to this?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that Linda is included in the subcommittee for the Community Center and that she is noticed of all meetings, activities, and going on, goings-on of the subcommittee and that the, any meeting for the subcommittee is officially noticed by the town manager so that the public can participate at will.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
I'll have some discussion since Linda made the topic about my text. I, I, excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry that I did text. Obviously, I really wasn't thinking about it and I probably should have gone through the town's website on the email. And what I did ask is I asked that night when I spoke up for the motion to be the primary for the senior center, nobody else spoke up. Then Dave said that he would. And then Linda said, well, I'll do it. And Dave, I felt a little bit pressured by Linda and said, okay, but, and the text was, would you object to Dave and I going and meeting at the Community Center? I've worked with Dave in the past. He was friends with my father. I'd like Dave to be with me and do this with me. And that's why I sent that.
Well, I think you need to look at the April sixteenth meeting.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Video to see how it took place.
I have a good recollection how it took place, Linda.
Well, I've got, I looked at a video and it wasn't the way you said it.
We have a motion on the table. I don't want to get going bantering back and forth. All those in favor of the motion to have Linda on the committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you're on the committee. We have any other business? Paul, you had something?
Linda, do you have anything else?
Nope, that's it.
You want to go? I want to go. So I, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate having a discussion at our next board meeting on two items. Last fall, a few of us drafted a work plan that was provided to this board for comment and added thoughts. Mr. Chairman, a few months ago, or a month ago, I, I forget, but you did ask members to provide any further input for us to review and discuss and adopt that work plan. Now, we've had a conversation just recently about parking and maybe the need for something which could go on a work plan. So I believe that the work plan that we have needs to be updated, and I also believe that the work plan that we have needs to find its way into our budget discussions so that we're not in misalignment, that we have things we want to get done and the budget has things it wants to get done. And so I'd like to carve out some time, unless there's any objection, that we, we spend some time looking at the work plan. And I don't know whether, Mr. Chairman, you want to ask for any last and final updates, but let's, let's put it on the table so that we can help the town manager and the public understand that we're aligned with the town and the town is aligned with us so that we don't get into any misalignment as we've seen in the past month or so. The second item I'd like to put on the table should be relatively straightforward, and it's born out of, it's born out of some advice and feedback that I occasionally get from, from the public. And the advice and feedback I'm getting is that we need to do a much better job recruiting committee members and publishing actual results and accomplishments and plans by our committees. I'm reminded, and this is, this is going to sound negative, but I'm just telling you what I get. I'm reminded that some folks see this government as an inner circle type of operation, kind of like closed society. So I, I'd like to read out some items that I'd like to discuss at the next meeting. And they're pretty straightforward, but you know, we did this a few months ago when we did our rules of procedure and our, our, you know, our rules. Number one is all of our committee's meetings should be properly noticed. We just had a conversation about that a minute ago. Minutes of meetings need to be taken and published promptly. We have guidelines for that. Committee members should avoid creating any meeting without proper notice, nor should they engage in sequential briefing. Committee members should not be asking town staff or its suppliers or contractors to do things without Mr. Pinio approving those actions. Committee members should not act in a regulatory capacity. Any issues and concerns by committee members need to come through the town manager to us. This is not new news for us because we admonish ourselves when we get all conflated. But I have a new one that I want to discuss at our upcoming meeting. Every appointed committee of the Select Board should publish, in my view, at least once per quarter, a one-page written, one page, one-page written report of their activities, accomplishments, concerns, plans, expenses, one page. And get that to the town manager for subsequent publication to the public so that the public can take a look at all the stuff, and it's good stuff that we're doing. And maybe we could convince Sam, even though she talked about the IT budget being a little scary, maybe we could just get like a webpage on, inside the town that says, here's what's going on with your committees. So I'd like to, I'm going to send that along. I'm going to send along some information about, because I know someone's going to say, what does regulatory capacity mean? I'm going to send along some definitions, and I'd like us to just maybe chew through that a little bit and just say, yep, nope, yep, nope, and move forward. And that'll be, I think, a good thing for us to do. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Brian?
Kind of parlaying on that, I have, I have a couple of committee chairs that would like to work with the town when the website is being updated. And they also suggested that department heads, and I assume department heads are going to be involved in that, have input into the web design so that it can be more friendly for department heads and more friendly for chairs of committees when they want to have their information on the town website. And it's because the EDC, in their latest event, had the number one thing that was told to them from a public room of eighty to a hundred different individuals, mostly business owners in town, that communication is key in town and they want to have easier access to communication for themselves and the whole community. And it's something that we're hearing on a regular basis. So that's, that's my first thing for other business. My second thing for other business is I would like to make a motion that we draft a letter, and then I'll explain it when I'm done, to Senator McConkey and the Committee of Conferences on HB one and HB two to tell them to leave rooms and meals taxed at thirty percent share as is and as. on HB 1 and HB 2 to tell them to leave rooms and meals tax at 30% share as is and as in the Senate budget plan. It's a very, very short note that we should have to go to them because that is going to protect the rooms and meals tax that we come back to us.
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, I also wrote to our representatives today. I'm totally in support of this motion.
I think it looks good coming from our unified board and our town manager.
I agree.
So...
So I've seconded your motion.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then the last one, this is just for clarification with Dave. Dave, I apologize. The motion that I made for the parking spots, and I should have clarified more, is based on the conversation with Libby Shannon when she came, all I'm trying to do is keep the parking spots open before the crosswalk on the travel lane, remove the ones that are behind, and then add the two that we all kind of discussed in this meeting that we know are still problematic, the one by Avery and the one by Maxfield. And then I would like, if we wanted to, I think we should designate two spots, and it can either be ones that will be still non-parking areas, no parking areas, or ones that we are removing, the no parking that we're removing, and make an additional spot for bicycles, and I think we can squeeze in a motorcycle spot and still leave enough room for people to see. So that's what my motion was about. If you want, I will bring it next meeting with a map and more details.
I would like to see a map.
Okay, I will do that.
Mr. Chairman, I would like us to...
So I can really understand what you're saying. I understand some of what you're saying, but I'd like to see it on paper. And it doesn't have to be anything fancy.
Okay. Is there any objection if Linda and I put a map and a package together for the board?
Oh, that's fine. Fine with me.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just for, you know, not trying to play Robert's Rules of Order, I believe the proper protocol is to reconsider the motion 5-0 that was taken by this board a week ago. That motion is the guiding principle because anything that is outside of that motion, I think is, I'm not using the word improper, but you know what I mean? It's not proper. I'd like to know, maybe from somebody, should we move to reconsider the 5-0 motion that was made, yes or no? And if we have to move to reconsider that, then these other arguments, other points of view that are being brought forward, I think then can properly be heard.
Second.
I didn't make a motion.
I didn't hear you make a motion. I'm saying, "Well, did I just..."
No, I didn't hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to reconsider the vote of the crosswalk's removal from June 18th.
You know, I would like to get what Dave needs. That's what I think we have.
That's where I was going to, that's where I'm coming from. So I think any motions, I'm not going to vote for anything that I don't really understand.
Don't do that.
I understand some of the issues by driving through town and looking at them, but I want to see which ones you want to deal with.
Okay, all right. The map will be...
Okay.
So I have a question on the point of order. So Brian just made a motion. The motion failed on what he wants to bring back to us.
No, I withdrew my motion. There was no vote.
There was a vote. There was...
The one you're talking about earlier in the meeting?
Yes. He's asking us to discuss the same thing that he lost the motion on.
Yes.
Well, I think he lost it because there wasn't enough information.
Yeah, and because I was a vote yes on that, I can vote to reconsider that again, and I can keep voting to reconsider that and bringing it up every week if I want to.
So let's just kind of solve this.
I would suggest we get a plan together.
That's what I said, Dave.
And bring it up at the next meeting.
Get the heck out of this thing.
Okay. Anything else under other business? If not, town manager's report.
Oh, we got somebody.
I've got one item under other business, Mr. Chairman. They sent to you earlier today a letter which was drafted by New Hampshire Municipal Association in collaboration with the town of Durham relative to HB 457 relative to zoning restrictions on dwellings. They have drafted a letter, and that letter is asking the governor to veto this. Most communities in the state are jumping on board with this. This is something that we discussed previously and thinking that the board may want to vote to sign on to this letter.
This was given to us tonight?
Yes, it came in this afternoon.
Correct. Anybody have any issues? Who want to make a motion to sign on to this?
I just have a question. Has our colleagues, because this is land use, that's how I read this, land use, have our colleagues who worry about that issue, the planning board, are they in dwelling units? Are they making any support on this? Recovery homes, isn't that a planning board issue?
I don't think they are because this letter came out today.
And we don't have a whole lot of time on any of these.
So we're opining and voting on something about land use, dwelling units, that the planning board has the responsibility to opine on? I'm just asking why?
Well, I think it's beyond that, Paul. And the reason I say that is if this law goes into effect the way that it's written, it's my understanding that we have no control under local ordinances, which include that of public safety, local fire codes, state fire codes, any zoning ordinance going forward, we wouldn't have the ability as Wolfboro to create it the way we see it for the town of Wolfboro.
So I intend to support this.
On top of that, this lies right on top of our capacity for water and sewer. This takes that equation and takes it completely away from us being able to use that to regulate development.
Now, I understand the implications of what this ordinance, of what this bill does, HB 457. I intend to support the letter. I'm just wondering, and it's not being critical, but I'm wondering where, why, where is our planning board? I'm sure our planning board would say, "This is not the best idea on the whole planet to deal with." But it would be wonderful if the planning board and the select board were to say, "This is a dumb idea," my personal opinion. But having said that, I'll go along with it. I understand it came in late, and I guess that's the way things work.
Yeah, the planning board met last night, and the letter came out today.
The planning board meets frequently, and this is, HB 457 has been in the works for months.
Yes, I know for a fact that planning board members have written against this individually.
Individually.
Okay. And so I have no problem supporting it. In fact, I think it's really important that we do. And maybe where you want to put on your work plan is better communication between the Board of Selectmen and the planning board on state bills that are going to affect the town.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend that the board of selected people send this letter to Governor Ayotte regarding HB 457 relative to zoning restrictions on dwelling units.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I'm not staying.
Steve Randall, Public Works. Just had one quick thing. I just wanted to remind everybody that Saturday is the Household Hazardous Waste Collection on the 21st. It's the only one that will be in town. Check the website. There will be other ones available across the network other than that, but I just throw that out there as a reminder. And for you folks, as Suzanne mentioned, the pump station did move today, so the sign for Sarah will be up tomorrow, so it will be in place before Saturday.
Very nice.
Good man.
Thank you.
Question for Steve. So when will you be marking the two spots down in front of Avery's and Verani's?
So the one in front of Verani, we ran out of paint, quite frankly. We ran out of paint. So that should be in, I believe, tomorrow, either tomorrow or Friday, and the first good day we get to it.
And the other one on the other side?
So the one on the other side, the diagonal, is if you measure it from the crosswalk, it works out to 19 feet at the furthest point. Code is, you know, the discussion was 20. That one, I was going to leave.
So we made the motion that night to mark that spot?
So I thought we made the motion of to and from if within that 20 feet. That was one foot. I'm more than happy to do it if that's how we see. That one, I thought, was close enough that we could probably at least maybe have a further discussion on it because of where it is and how it is with the road there, but...
That was my motion. I'd like it to be marked, and then if somebody else wants to take it away, they can be the ones to take the spots away.
No, I have no problem with that, John. We should have the paint in. Like I said, they told, Sharon Williams said, hopefully tomorrow. If not, tomorrow will be Friday. And then the first good day we get without rain, it will be done. No problem.
Thank you.
Jim?
At a budget committee meeting, I guess it was this week, record time for meeting, they will be reviewing and considering for adoption rules and procedures for the budget committee. Additionally, on the 24th of this month, which I believe is next Tuesday, there'll be a Budget 101 workshop at the library. One of the other things that took place was the budget committee voted to have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. It would be tentatively right now, October 22nd, and the purpose for that will be to have agencies come to Wolfboro just once. So they will join that meeting, and that would most likely be a standalone meeting for that event. Libby Museum should be receiving a draft contract in the next day or so regarding the simple valuation of the Libby collection. Once I have that, I will check with legal to ensure that that meets the recommendations by the Attorney General's Office, and from that point, we'll get it started. We also, on the 12th of June, the Libby Museum, the areas in question were opened up for the engineer. I found out today that the engineer was actually on site that day with his team. So I'm anticipating a report coming to you in your July 2nd meeting regarding the Libby Museum and what's going on there. As Steve alluded to, the pump station's been moved, and the line striping's taking place in the downtown area, and I believe we've reached substantial completion on the waterline project. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Committee reports?
Can I just ask one thing? Dave, I mean, Jim, I'm going to go to that workshop, which will mean there are going to be three selectmen, so you may want to notice that. Thank you.
And Jim, I have a question. With regards to the pump station, is there any additional funds in that budget for that project to do any type of screening or landscaping around it or something?
I'm going to sit here with a great deal of confidence and say no. And I'm also going to sit here with a great deal of confidence that I don't want to jump and just do something because inevitably what we do is going to be wrong. So what I'd rather do is take a little bit of time to think it through, get some people involved, and if it's landscaping, if it's fencing, if it's bricking the thing, whatever that decision is, I think we put that into the 2026 budget.
Yeah, we could put a wooden structure over the top of it like the old one that was there.
Well, that's for further discussions sometime later. Committee reports. John?
I'm starting after us.
Oh. Chair, you picked that end. Go ahead.
No, you, you're up.
So I have to start first by public interaction with me. I've had a lot of people contact me within the last two weeks since the last meeting, and they've said, "We're watching you, and we like what you say out there because nobody else on the board would say what you say." And they say, "We're impressed with you." And I kind of felt good about that because I think things are coming up that haven't been coming up. And one of the persons said to me, "You got your hands full on that board." And I said, "I do. It's a thankless job, isn't it?" And I said, "No, it's not." I said, "I love my town, and that's why I'm here." And to also move on, yes, I did meet with Dave about the senior center. We did a walkthrough of the building, both the buildings, and I think Dave has a lot of construction expertise and a lot of input. I appreciated his input. I can be honest, I didn't miss you, Linda, and I had a subsequent meeting later on that day at 3:00 with Amy and Christine and Dave to discuss the process of bringing that to the CIP and what the next steps were. And I also had a planning board meeting, and that's about it. Thank you.
Okay. I had a Conservation Commission meeting. As John just said, he and I went through Lena Street. We also, as a group, met with the Police Commission. I think that's all I had at this point. Linda?
Yeah, I attended New Hampshire Lake Congress. They had many different sessions on different water topics, and I went to the section on septic regulations, which I found very informative. Wolfboro Waters discuss identifying potential lots that could be used for stormwater detention methods. As you have heard, the posting at the Town Beaches' ramp will be the DES flyer, which will have a QR code to the Healthy Swimmer mapper. I met with members of the Wolfboro Waters Committee working on rust pond sediment issues and the Governor Wentworth Regional School District Budget Committee to discuss ways the town and the Governor Wentworth Regional School System could collaborate to address water flowing off the Kingswood Complex. The Kingswood Complex Art Center uses rainwater from the roof to flush toilets. It has pervious pavement and a retention basin. I think they did a lot of work to try to deal with water on the complex, but the issue comes when it leaves the complex because that's at a high point and the water is running down through the woods. I had a library trustee meeting. Here are the percentage increase of use for 2025 over 2024. Patreons count up 14%. Their overdrive or their hoopla, audiobooks up 5%, magazines up 78%, and ebooks up 10%. The library is really being used. Now, the library is running on solar, and the new landscaping is going in and is paid by the Library Foundation and generous donors. I attended the Friends of the Library annual meeting and learned that the Friends donated $48,000 in 2024 for library programs, book purchase, and upgrade to the library equipment, just to name a few. This morning, I attended a community TV board meeting along the last couple of weeks with four subcommittee meetings, trying to work on putting the fundraising campaign together. I attended the EDC meeting, and I'll let Brian... I attended the EDC meeting, and I'll let Brian fill you in on that. And I was at a Friends of Pop Oil Inn meeting.
I had nowhere near that amount of stuff that I did. And you're a busy person, Linda. I spent the past couple of weeks mostly out of town, but on the phone with, and I mentioned this earlier, with folks that as the budget season comes underway, they want to see more alignment between our work plan and the budget. Makes sense. I keep asking people, "Why don't you join some of our committees?" Because when I get the little, you know, the little shot and the chops from people about that, I say, "Well, join the committees." And so I think we have great things going on with our committees, as I said earlier, and we ought to publish it. And if people can get interested, they might want to join. And we could avoid the concentration of people who serve on multiple committees. And that's not a bad thing. It's because people are doing, because they love the town. We want more people who love the town to get involved. Sat with the police commissioners, enjoyed that meeting. It's always fun. There is things happening at the police department that I think is, you know, milestones are beginning to be achieved. That's good. The chief has, you know, filled us in as where he is and how many people are going to the academy in process. So I think we have some progress there. In anticipation of our next docks and wharves juggernaut, I asked Representative McDonald to get us whatever documentation we need to move the buoys. And that's going to be a month of Sundays of negotiating. But for those of us who drive our boats out there, we know how much hell gets raised with people presenting bow waves and leaving with bow waves. And I just asked John to, you know, guide us through the process or just tell us what form we have to fill out. Because I do, you know, personally, and I know our dockhands who work down there, they see, you know, the boats bobbing up and down. And not only is it not good, it's dangerous. And I don't want to hang on the dangerous thing. So that's about what I've been doing for the past couple of weeks. Thank you.
Okay. So I attended, as we all did, the police, the meeting with the Police Commission. At the EDC, we had an update from James Riley about the NIC. And it's been a four- or five-year fundraise. It's been a 15-year plan to build their facility. He gave us all the stats and all the numbers on it. And it's going to be a great add to the facility. And they're believing that, they believe that they're going to add, they're going to bring, draw a lot more people to the town from surrounding towns to use the facility. We talked about the newsletter and social media, and that's where the conversation came up about the chair of the EDC really wants to be involved in our town website because she says that she wants what they do to blend seamlessly with the town. And she thought that maybe other chairs of committees and boards would like to do that also. And I don't know how we can plan that, but that's something that was a concern. We, they had a big discussion about the recap event. And the biggest thing was how best to communicate with the town and what's going on in the town. They also had a big discussion about the loss of 12 parking spots, which they thought happened quickly without the public's general knowledge and was a little bit of a sticker shock to them. So they just, again, they said, "This is another piece that went back to the communication. We wish we had known that something was going to take place like that." There was a big discussion of the Fourth of July Parade and what was going to happen. A big discussion about Lake Winnipesaukee Day. And there's an update for a fundraiser for someone who wants to have a large sculpture built and donated, you know, money donated and built in town. And I talk about housing again, the housing crunch in the state. We had our Budget Committee meeting, which was 35 minutes, which was great. And I think it's going to be nice that now the agencies can come when the weather is not inclement to the Budget Committee in the middle of the winter, and they can all come here one time instead of having to travel twice to the town to ask for their money. I spent a lot of time with the sidewalk information myself, trying to, again, understand things. It's what I like to do. And make sure that we don't get misinformation spread, which happens a lot. The misinformation is that the state and the DOT are requiring us to take away spots. That's not the case at all. This is our choice, and we can do it however we choose to do it. If the road was completely reconstructed, then it falls to the state regulations, and we would have to follow it. And we would lose way more than the 12 spots that we're losing right now. But that's another $10 million project that's two decades away. And with regard to ADA crosswalks that was brought up, and then we got paperwork, and it wasn't even discussed at this meeting. The ADA compliance was addressed in 2012. It's been all addressed. It's all set with regards to sidewalks and streets. What we do have for ADA compliance is we should be a little bit concerned about things that hang over the sidewalks that don't meet ADA compliance, which is from anything from 27 inches to 80 inches up cannot impede out into the sidewalk more than six inches because someone who is visually impaired, and I don't know if that's the right term anymore, but they will not see that, and that can cause them distress and to fall and whatnot if they are hit in the head or the face with it. So that's the only real issue I see with ADA, because I've spent weeks studying the ADA compliance issues for our town. And that's where I fall.
All right. Any questions from the press? Is she on? No. Public input. Do we have any more public input?
Hello. I'm Greg Rourke. I apologize, I walked in a little late to the discussion on the parking and the crosswalks earlier. And just wanted to voice my disappointment in the 12 spaces that were removed with such haste a couple of weeks ago. And just want to, just want to also just voice my, as a business owner in town, these businesses downtown bring us as business owners that are here year-round, living here in Wolfboro. They bring the people that have second homes, tourism, the people that bring the money into the town in the summertime. A lot of our town's revenues are made in these, the short season in the summer. So that, I just wanted to, and I also want to make certain that safety is also a very high priority of mine. So I'm not saying that, I'm not throwing safety out the window, trust me. But I just, I just want to also respectfully, earlier, Brian made a motion in this, during this meeting. And Mr. Senical indicated that he was not in favor because he wasn't expecting a motion. And that sounded a little strange to me. And correct me if I'm wrong there. Because I just wanted to, for clarification, I guess, were you, as a select board, expecting a motion two weeks ago to have these 12 spaces removed?
No, we weren't.
So I just, I guess I just, the whole process, I guess, seemed without public input, without business input. And you had some businesses here tonight, and that's why I'm here speaking. So I just want, and I know, Mr. O'Brien, earlier you mentioned that the 500 vote, I believe, two weeks ago. To revisit that, that it had already been passed, but I guess to revisit this with a little bit more detail and data, I guess, there's, was there, is there data on the safety? This might have been asked earlier as well. So I just, I just, I just want to make, make sure that the 12 spaces downtown in our core of our downtown area, if you, I don't know how many there are, I could go count tomorrow, but a percentage-wise, from here to where Camelot Bookstore used to be, like by Lydia's, I mean, I call that kind of the downtown core. And 12 spots out of all those spots is right on the, right on the main strip is a pretty high percentage. So I just, that's, that's, I just want to make certain that, and I know you, as a select board, look out for our town as town taxpayers, businesses, visitors, all, that whole encompassing audience that we have here in this, in this town. And I just, I just think that it would be, that we would all be remiss to remove those parking spots like that without, without a little bit more, more input from everybody, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
I know, Dave. Don't want to hear from me again. Bobby Budman. Just a couple things. I do hope you revisit after, you're going to give pictures to Dave and everything. I do hope you revisit that. Because again, the other side of the parking spots, when you're coming at it, there's ample time. We don't need to lose those. But I do think we do need those spots before. Want to reiterate, motorcycles are almost the same size as cars now. So please, bikes, yes. Motorcycles, no. Brian, I want to say that I appreciate you listening to me after the Budget Committee. I am very worried as a Budget Committee member and as a citizen who has watched our town go into two default budgets. I think one of the most important things that we have to convey to our citizens of our town this year is getting this budget passed. I think a lot of people don't know how we've been hurt by not passing the budgets. They, our citizens don't see it. We don't see it. We say, "Default budget? The town ran anyway." So it would be great to be able to be very transparent, convey to the people. I am very, very worried about the meals and rooms tax, the $600 and $6,000. So Brian, thank you about the letter. Member Thurston, I did not see you vote on that. I don't know how you voted on that issue. You guys just took a blanket vote. And I don't think you voted. If you did, then probably, is Brenda still doing the notes? She probably needs that one, if that's a yes.
I abstained.
You abstained. Okay. Thank you for that. The other issue is, I'm sure you know that in court, we're able to keep our swept funds. But I'm sure you also heard that we have now, at the state level, we have universal school vouchers, which are going to take funding from our Education Trust Fund, where our special, catastrophic special education funding does come from. So I know it's the school district, and we say it doesn't matter, but our citizens get that bill at the same time, and we pay that. And so that is going to be added. And I just, as a Budget Committee member, I think it is so important for us to start speaking to the public now about our lost revenues and our increased, the items we are now going to be responsible for. Even if it's at the school level, it impacts the citizens in the way they see the budget. Chief, thank you so much for Saturday. I don't know if anybody came through town on Saturday, but we had over 1,200 people on Pickering Corner. And Sergeant Sparrow was great. He was there the whole time. He was helping people cross the street because we do, we at the time, didn't have a crosswalk up there. We do now. So the police department was great. It was a fun day. It was a good time. 1,200 happy people. Can't go wrong with that. I do want to say that I hope you do not streamline the outdoor petition process with these food trucks. Part of our outdoor permits is that we allow the citizens to come forward and discuss these things. Like if there's a food truck there till 10 o'clock, I believe the abutters, the neighbors, have the right to be part of that petition process to say, "That's a school night," or "That's a this night," or "That's happening." So I really hope you don't get rid of our public input process with our outdoor permits. And then, quick question. I just think the citizens should know where the $65,000 is coming from for the compressor. I mean, we all knew the compressor was going, but I think the citizens deserve to know where that money is, what account it's coming out of, especially being in a default year. And what was my last one? I had one more. Oh, again, how much is it going to cost to put the ice in early? I just think that needs to be answered, and it still has not been answered. Putting the ice in on August 11th, which is traditionally a very, very hot day, you know, we're already looking at over $5,000 to put ice in. Does it increase? And again, that's Budget Committee me, because Curler me really wants to put the ice in. But it has to be asked. How much more money is it going to cost us to put the ice in early? Thanks.
Okay. Is there anything else? Oh, Chief?
You're up.
Thank you. Nice talking to you.
Should be going to, Chase said, "Thank goodness about a short meeting." In the middle of a 20-minute discussion about how short a meeting was going to be. But I digress. I just wanted to clarify what Bobby said. It was Corporal LaRochelle. Corporal LaRochelle was your people-crosser. I just wanted to comment on this because it is a follow-up to our meeting with the commission. We were a little concerned about the amount of people in such a small area. I do have to, and I want to make notice to the Board of Selectmen, that, yeah, I counted, figured around 1,000 people. Compared to a lot of my colleagues throughout the state, we did better than everybody. The residents and the other folks that did show up to form a peaceful protest did just that. There was no criminal behavior that any of the officers could spot. The group or the crowd or the protesters were smiling, positive. We had absolutely no problem at all. And it was really nice to see Wolfboro be classy. So I just wanted that noted. Even the counter protesters were pretty well in line and a lot better than I had anticipated. I also want to shout out to my own agency. I put out a notice and asked officers to give up part of their Saturday to just be on standby just in case. And I had five right away. So we're doing much better. And thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. If there's no other business, I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Falls in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?